You usually are. If our time is now 5:00 PM, all this meeting of the Grandberry High School District to order. As the record show, the former board members is present and this meeting has been duly called and had notice of this meeting as been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We will begin with the invocation led by Barbara Townsend.
Please join me in prayer. Papa God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for those who are here tonight who care about the children of Grandberry High School. Father, I ask you to open our eyes, our ears, and our hearts to you and what each of us have to say to each other. May the words that we speech, the words that we speak, and the actions that we take be pleasing to you, Father. I ask you to bless our time here tonight and bless each person who is here. And I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and join us in the prayers.
Join the prayers, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, the first item, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Barely.
Courtney, bring your culture.
I'm like, okay. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a presentation by our superintendent, Dr. Courtney Morosky. And there is a feedback form on the table over there if you were not able to grab one. I encourage you to get one now. It is interactive during the presentation, so please feel free to grab one. Yeah, and it's on the QR code. It's also on the screen, so if you could scan that, you'll be able to participate in the feedback as well during the presentation. And then after Dr. Morosky's presentation, we will then go into public comments, open public comments.
Okay, so can you hear me without these microphones or would you rather I use a microphone? At least she's in line. Can you hear me? Okay, great. So, it's so wonderful to stand in front of you guys this evening. And some of you may have heard this presentation before, but hopefully you'll hear something different this time. And you'll see there's kind of two parts to it. There's some slides that talk about me and the district, and it's a chance where I ask you some questions, and you guys will get feedback. And the great thing about it is, as you're getting feedback, it'll show on the screen. So I'll tell you when that starts. So, you can relax for now. You don't have to plot your phones right now, but that video warning, we can do that. And it's really, we really want to hear some feedback, and so I encourage everyone to use a phone if you haven't. All right. So, how we start off by thanking the people in this picture. They are all focused, this is our leadership for the district, and they're focused on students. And every time we get together, I'm reminded about how hard they're working to make sure we're making decisions that are based on students. And so I'm grateful for everybody in the picture, and most of them are here. I think everybody's coming, they're just a little delayed, so thank you to the board. We have a mission and vision here in Grandberry. These were developed over time with different people. Some of you may have been involved in the process. But the mission of the school district is committed, we are committed to empowering all learners to achieve academic excellence. And then the vision goes further, and we want to inspire excellence and empower all students to be future-ready and positive contributors to their community. And so really my job as superintendent is to look at those two themes and see if we're living our mission and vision every day. And so if we're not, then we need to make some adjustments going along the way. Y'all come on in, everybody go. So, I also want to tell you a little bit about myself and who I am and where I came from. I think investing in a relationship together as we get to know each other is important. And I want people to know that I'm approachable, and I want to hear your thoughts and we get to know each other. And so these people are really important to me. This is my family, and so you'll notice my husband is behind me. His name is Terry. We've been married for 25 years. He's from Tyler, Texas. I'm from Mansfield, Texas, and so spent most of our time here in this area. And then the two young men are my sons. The one on the right-hand side is Jackson, and so he is in Oklahoma City. He's doing computer science, specifically cybersecurity. And then his fiancee is right in front of him, and they're getting married next month in April, so a lot going on. And then my younger son is a sophomore at University of Central Arkansas in Conway, and he is pursuing an accounting degree and wants to be a CPA. So that's him, and his girlfriend's behind him, Hannah. She's been with us a long time, too. My mom is poking her head over on the right-hand side of the screen, and so she has moved to Grandberry as of this weekend, and then I know my husband and I have moved here, too. My other boys, they're not moving here yet, so hopefully we'll get them closer. That's what I figured. They'll be here. So that's my family, very important to me, and so you'll hear me talk about them a lot, and hopefully I'll learn a little bit about your families as we go along. Here's just a quick fact about the district. Many of you know these facts, but I think it's important to remind ourselves about some of these things. We have hovering on 7,900 students. Employees, welcome, come on in. We have 1,384. We've got teachers, 678. And then we've got our starting salary of 60K. So, a lot of work's been done on that recently to get that starting salary up. Our average teacher has been here 11 years, which is a great sign because that means people want to stay, and they're not leaving quickly unless they get here. So we'd love to see that number. And we have 10 campuses. This is a snapshot of our student diversity as a district. Each campus looks a little different, but as a district as a whole, we have 68% of our students are white, and the next largest category is our constituent students, and there are 26% of those students. And this is smaller than our group in Mariposa. And by the numbers, this number's really important, and I think we need to remind ourselves all the time about the number of our economically disadvantaged students. We have 57% of our students that are economically disadvantaged, and sometimes when you look around the city of Grandberry, it doesn't look like that, and so that's a big reminder for us to think about who we serve every day. Some campuses have higher number of students that are economically disadvantaged, and some have lower, it just kind of depends. I would even bid to say that that number probably is higher because not everybody fills out that paperwork, and so that's part of the process. Welcome. 91% of our high school students take a CTE course. 16% of our students have the Special Education Service associated with them, and then 9% are gifted and talented. And once again, this is a snapshot of a particular day. These numbers fluctuate as kids come up. Welcome, y'all come on in. This is another fun thing to think about in our district, and that is the size of our district. So, I believe, I've been saying we have 225 square miles. I was recently corrected to we have about 250 square miles. So, it did say plus on there, but, and so to give you some reference, Fort Worth ISD has a square mileage of 215. You might want to fact-check that, but I'm pretty sure that is exactly right, right around that range. So we are bigger in land size than some of the more concentrated districts. And so what that means is we have buses that travel a whole lot. And so the 66 here is that our buses travel a combined 5,436 miles every day. That's like driving from San Diego to Charleston and back. So, what that does is it puts a lot of wear into your buses, a lot of gas, and then right now we've got that dual route trying to make sure all kids get back and forth where they need to be. We also have some challenges because of only three, separate three access points across the water. So that's another challenge. In our district, over 3,300 students partake in our transportation services, so that's a large number of our students out of that 7,900 that ride our car transportation services each day. Our finances, our general operating budget is, this number is about 93. I think we fact-checked that, it's 93.91 right there for last year's budget or this year's budget?
That's this year's.
This year, but thank you. And then the other things on here are as well, combined tax rate, the average home market, and the first grading. We've been superior for the nine, nine years in a row. All right, so, the question that I get asked the most is, what's my vision as a new leader? And I always like to say that the best way to learn as a new leader is to listen more than you speak. So, what I'd like to do is give us a chance to start interacting. And so if you have some, now's the time, and the QR code is going to come up on the screen, or if you have a paper in front of you, you can do that. Hopefully we'll have no technology problems. Make sure that we'll be able to give you time for you to get in, and then we'll start going through some items. So I'll give you just a second. And the real goal is that I don't come in with a vision that we created together. And so what we really want to do is hear from students, we're going to talk to students, parents, community members, and staff. I've been doing the same presentation with different kinds of groups across the district. And we're going to put together some trends, and I'm going to report it to the faculty afterward. Okay. I thought I could warn y'all back here. Okay, are we good? Does anybody still need help getting on? Because we've got, I've got technology help in somewhere in the room here, hopefully. He's in the back. Yeah. Oh yeah, I see him back there, both y'all. He's high. Okay. Anybody need help? Okay, we really want to hear your voice, so I'll make sure you have a chance to do it. Okay. All right, so this first question's super easy. What best is your affiliation with the district? Are you a staff member, a parent, a community member, or a student? And you can pick, some of you play a couple of roles. Just choose the role that you're going to answer the questions from the lens of today. You'll see it's just starting to move, and usually what I do is just wait till it kind of finishes wiggling a little bit.
Does the board participate?
They, they, would y'all like to participate? I can. Some of them have done it in a different session, it's a good question.
I'll help you out, I'll help you.
Okay. All right, so most of the people in the room here are community members. We've got some staff, we've got some parents, and then no students identified yet on there. All right, we're going to the next screen. All right, so for some reason those little images come up, but there are some things on the board here that I've already heard about in talking to people. I'd like to give you a moment to think about what you think our district should focus on. And so some of those things can be reading and writing is one choice, math and science, communication and transparency of the district. We've got student behavior and bullying, cell phone use, climate and culture in general, career-focused learning, or more choice opportunities. And choice opportunities to me being, means things like, and I know is a choice in our district, the way that that St. Stephen Academy is. So those are your choices, you can choose up to five. You don't have to keep your pensions up to five, and I'll give you three minutes to think through that. We're still wiggling, so we'll give you two more minutes. Okay, so, in this room, when we look at the results, they're trending about the same. There's some differences, especially when we talk to different, you know, staff versus community members, so it'll be interesting to see how that all comes together. All right, I'm going to change the slide. Once I change, you'll go back. All right, here we go. Okay, so this is a statement, and the statement is, "The Grandberry ISD staff has high expectations for all students and is committed to the individual success of each student." So the answer could be yes, it could be no, or it could be some do, some don't. So think about that statement and how you feel about that. Okay, so we're slowing down on the wiggling. So, as a district, we would like for everybody to feel and every student to have high expectations, and so that is an area that we have some growing to do. We would like the answers to be yes on everything. And so that's good feedback, I appreciate you guys answering that honestly. This one is important to me because I really want to know who's comfortable expressing concerns. And so for the question or the statement is, "I feel comfortable expressing my concerns, desires, and opinions to Grandberry ISD personnel." And there are classroom teachers, you feel comfortable doing math, campus leaders, and then district leaders. And it goes from strongly disagree to strongly agree. And so you can choose on that, on your own device, how you feel about each of those groups. If you don't have interaction with the teacher, you should be able to skip that. Still wiggling a little bit, give us some minutes. Okay, what's great about this is in the background, you'll see it looks kind of like a mountain going up, and so that's kind of where the answer, it shows you where those answers are. So on this, on this particular one, campus leaders and district leaders have kind of got an arc on both sides, so that's something to consider, is that people feel either one way or the other, and then that kind of averages out in the middle. So that's good feedback as well. And this is important to mention because we want to make sure that there's an avenue as a process, a system to make sure that you feel confident and comfortable sharing concerns or questions with the right level of people. Thank you for providing that feedback, and going to the next screen, all ready? All right. Now, here's where I want you to know, whatever you type on here comes up on the screen, all right? So just keep that in mind, which could be good, could be bad, but I just want to make sure that you know that what you're typing comes up on the screen. And the first one is pretty easy. We're going to get our minds ready for this, and it's think of one impactful teacher that made a difference in your life, and what's made them special. You can put up to three things. So think about your own life, somebody that made an impact on you as a teacher. And find that in. That's been coming up already. So as they start to come up, the words that are a little bolder, a little bigger, are repeat words, and so they tend to be in the center. So kind, cared, attentive, empathetic is on there, knowledge, engaged, some great words that really talk about great teachers. Maybe just a bit more to get those entered. So on this slide, what we want to think about is we want every student that comes through Grandberry ISD to have an impactful teacher, and we'd like to have them every year. So in order for us to get there, we know that we probably have some areas that we do things really well, and some things that we need to get better at. So the next two questions are directly related to that. What can we, what do we do well? Make sure this happens every day, every year, for every kid, and what do we need to get better at? So, the next one, question is, what do we do well? And it's an open-ended question. We'll give you about a minute and a half to respond, and this will pop up on the screen here. So as you're doing that, I'm going to press the spacebar on this laptop because it categorizes them for us, and we'll see what categories pop up. And you can still enter these, but what we'll look at is kind of the big trends. It'll take just a second to categorize for us. So things that we do well, caring for students, opportunities for students, we saw some of that in the comments, CTE programs, which some of those opportunities for CTE programs, communication, community engagement, and there's eight that weren't categorized, but just know that I'm going to go through and look at all of them and get them in categories. But that is where we are for here. Some of the comments are prepare my child for life after high school, capturing kids' hearts, we've got some that are probably belong on the next screen, some teachers teach, cares for students, community involvement, and then teachers need support, more support, good leadership. Okay, lots of great things for us to consider. Now, this next screen, we do want to hear some things that we can do better. My only request is we want critical feedback, but please be kind and respectful because we are going to look through this and make some trends and see what we need to improve. So, the next screen is where we have an opportunity to improve. So same thing, open response. I'll give you guys about 90 seconds, think through what we can do better. So I'm going to, while you're finalizing, I'm going to press the space button and see what kind of categories we get in the opportunities to improve area. And once again, we will go through them individually because they won't all get categorized correctly. Give you just a second. I'm thinking really hard on this one. Here we go. Things that we can do better, school growth, probably, we can look at that individually, probably included both the size of a school and academic growth, probably both in that one. Community engagement, we saw some of those pop up, communication, transparency, fiscal responsibility, and number eight that didn't get categorized yet. And then we'll read just a couple of these as well, areas that we know we need to get better. Focus on student outcomes, transparency, being honest, educate voters on bonds, listen and include the community, communication, you can see that word come up a lot, equity among campuses, communication, honesty, communication, so a lot, teacher pay, engage parents. So lots of great feedback for us to think through. Everybody good, we ready to go to the next one? Okay, the last one is specific really to me and my role, and so the question is, how can I, as a superintendent, best serve and support the district in Grandberry? And this is the last question that you're interacting with, so we all need help. So, specifically, what can I do to better serve and support you in your role, whether you're a community member or through your staff? Just a little bit longer, and we will get the categories on this one. So while you're finishing that up, some of the things that have come through is focus on education and performance, be more responsive to parents and community, when to ask a direct question and answer it, knowledge in Grandberry, and build relationships externally, be forthcoming and honest, respect the work done before you, and keep the students the priority. And I'm going to hit the spacebar and see what kind of categories it gives us in this area. So student focus, community engagement, support for teachers, transparency and accountability. There's three that are un-categorized, and minority support is on its own right there. Okay, so, I really appreciate the feedback, for me specifically, as we go forward, and remember this is one of the many groups I'm presenting to, I think I'll have over 30 different engagement sessions to move through. And then by May, I should have some results to present to the board, and some action steps about how we're addressing some of the high-identity trends that came up through all of the groups that I'm working with. So, I'd love to do a question and answer. What time will we ever get on time? Yeah. And so if you're signed up to speak, this is different, so this is just you and me, question and answer going back and forth. We still have it through sign and speak, that'll be right after this part. So if you have a question, I'd love to see if I can have any, I've got more people in the room to help me today, probably been a lot in chat, so, any questions? Somebody just has to break the ice. Okay.
When you gave this presentation a week or so ago when I was present, I think I remember you telling us that on the slide that you showed of this amount of district employees and the amount of teachers, and years of experience, the 11 years experience, I thought I remembered you saying that was their total experience, not their Grandberry experience.
I thought it was average in our, where's Ryan? I may have, I may have just supposed to make sure. I thought that was average years in the district. Is the average years? Is average years in the district? Okay, and so I said average years teaching last time?
I thought you said, yeah, average teaching overall, not average in Grandberry.
Okay, so we need to confirm that. Is that in here? Yeah. That's a good question, let's make sure that we get you the right answer. So yeah, totally. Good question, we'll get back to you as soon as we get that answered right now. Great question, yes.
Courtney, I don't know if you've, you've probably heard a lot about the traffic problem in Grandberry. You said, you know, our last year in particular, we worked really hand-in-hand with him to try to figure out what the city, the county, and the school can do to, you know, to, not really necessarily fix the problem, but to band-aid it until we do get some more roads and stuff in here and stuff. And I know some, you know, in your school, on your buses and stuff, that's a good number, but is, is that a number that, you know, is going to fix something like, I mean, because there's a lot of automobiles and a lot of cars and buses on the roads that we don't have.
Yeah.
For your school, so.
It's a good question, I'm glad you brought it up. It's on our minds all the time, thinking about future plans to make sure that we're preparing for, even when there's road construction about to happen, those kind of things. And so, we don't have a set solution. We should be talking to the board about possibly some things that we do that would make that better going forward, but we don't have a solid plan. I think it was part of one of the bonds. Before, is that right? So, we did not get that bond to solve that problem. But we know it's still a problem, so we're trying to work on what kind of solutions that we can put in place. Right now, the double routes is the best solution that we have because that spreads out and then helps us meet the needs of all the kids with the baby.
Well, do you believe that most of the kids are riding a bus because they don't wanna be on it so long? Because when you go to any of these campuses and school that out, there's more cars there than there are buses. I mean, there are a lot of those.
It's a good question, I haven't asked that question, so I don't know the answer to that. It's probably something that families consider. A lot of families rely on our transportation and don't have a choice. So, you know, the families that do have a choice are not sure, you know, what their decision-making is. It's a great question. It's not, we're definitely still discussing it. We know that it's a problem that's not going away and that we need to find solutions that we can afford right now.
If a citizen, a parent emails a trustee and there's no answer, can you help me understand that process? Or can you email all of them and there's no answer? Does that put you in a bad situation if we email all of you at once? Or is it better to email each one? And what is a citizen to do if you or any of you do not answer? Back when I was on the book review committee, I submitted a lot of good information and it was pretty much crickets. I would think if you're on a committee, they would say, "I've got it." And I would love for someone to say, "I've got it," or "I can't deal with this right now, I'll get back with you." Just some kind of, something like that. But I haven't seen it in the three years that I've been involved. So I'm curious how that works, or if I'm making an error by blind copying each one or not blind copying, normal copying. But other citizens have not been responded to and I'm curious how to get a response? Or is that even, does that make them step into something illegal if they're all copied?
Well, we can't have all of them on one email, I do know that. Because once they respond, it becomes a meeting and open meeting. And so that is true. Another thing that I know that we do is we look for trends across. And so if we have many community members responding, then that's something that they pay attention to and start prioritizing. It doesn't mean that we respond to each individual question or concern. Basically, they represent everybody in the district. And so what they're looking for are responding and categorizing, prioritizing some of our biggest needs. And so I think that's what, I know that's what I do every day. And I know that that's what they do as elected officials.
Okay, it's not, I think it's very professional personally to not have a response at all anyway.
We do appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, great, absolutely. Thank you for answering that because the whole, if you message them all at once, then they're definitely not gonna answer. If you message each one individually.
We should not because we, we don't want it to become part of a meeting at any times.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you for doing this tonight, Dr. Moraski. Is there, are there any plans to put us into a system where the trustees are elected by district rather than place? So we would each have a representative to go to?
That's a great question. I don't really answer to that. Does anybody have any information here? I think we are, have we ever discussed zones versus places? It doesn't look like it's this time, that's something that the board's. Yeah, we're at large, sorry, we're at large. Okay, thank you for that question. Yes.
Thank you. We have some really wonderful teachers in Granbury and I wondered what your ideas were on how to support them and keep them engaged.
Great question. And we have some wonderful teachers. And so I know that we are working hard all the time to make sure that we are competitive in salary. But some of the things that we do really well is provide places for childcare for them. And so that is one of our retention things that happen in the district. And also we gave a teacher incentive allotment program which we recognize and retain for a high performing teacher. So that is something that is really near and dear to our hearts because we do want them to stay in our district. Am I missing any big retention recruiting information?
Second is for specialized areas of need.
Second is for specialized areas, like special ed, maybe from five to twelve.
Very responsive TD from the curriculum department. They look and survey everybody on what they're needing and they will do very responsive TD over the summer. And, yeah, and our administrative staff also does a lot of instructional coaching.
Great question. I love it when we focus on teachers, the hardest serving people in the district. And we wanna make sure that we acknowledge, celebrate, and support them every chance that we can get.
I saw some reports today of local, some local districts considering going to a school week. Do you believe in that?
Yes, I am. And I, it's, you're not the first person to ask that. And so, it is not on our radar right now. I never say never to anything, but it's not something that I believe that we're really seriously into in the past. I believe we're seriously into it in the past. It's difficult on families to find childcare if they have a full-time job. So there's a little bit of, there's a give and take to that too.
You just have a lot of money on the bus.
Yeah, it's something to consider. So, we'll probably watch a little bit, I'm not sure. In my experience, a lot of smaller rural districts do that. And that's one of the retaining retention measures for teachers is they get to kind of do, you know, kids come to school four days. But as we learn more, if that supports it and misses the cost savings, I think it is something that we would talk about, but not something that we're talking about right now. Thank you for the question. Yes.
Yep, Mark, and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife. Most people know this on the board. A number you've hit on that twice, fifty-six point something percent economically disadvantaged community. And as you said, you look around the community, you think, like, where are we? The problem is, they will be the ones that will be most impacted by a bond. Because, listen, my house prices go up and my taxes go up. Most of us can handle it. But that fifty-six economically disadvantaged people, it impacts them the most. And some of them won't be able to buy a house if prices keep going up. So, and I know we have a surplus, twenty-four million dollars or something like that. I would just ask before this board starts to think about, when they think about the future, think about how we can manage that surplus. Because I think we're the only ones that have that level. Or at least certain one of the few. And how we can manage the district expenses so that we don't impact on that fifty-six percent. Because honestly, that's who it's gonna hurt the worst. Unless someone is calculating something on bonds, that's what it's gonna hurt. When prices go up, even if the tax rate, their price of home goes up and they have to pay more taxes, that's where it's gonna impact. I'm encouraged you being here. Stick to your own path. Because I think the path we've been on has not been the best path. Last, but education and management of budget. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I do think that's important for us to think through going forward is to think about all our families and how the students impact all the families. So that's a, definitely something that we need to think through if we decide that we are gonna go back for a long time. Consider all of our families up because of fair stationing.
This is a perfect opportunity to, to express some of the confusion on how school finance works. I noticed Mr. Lowery said a surplus. My understanding is that's not really a surplus, that's a fund balance because of the way the revenue comes in from the state is delayed. And so that's not really a surplus that we can just, like, get to manage. However, it's used to pay for the expenses before the revenue comes in from the state. Is that, is that?
So I'm gonna let our resident expert explain. So fund balance, I think, is what you're asking, is how we use the fund balance? And you're right that the state is lagging in some ways. Do you wanna explain about the fund balance?
And is that, is that what, what surplus?
I think that's what you're referring to, is the fund, the twenty-four.
Yeah, we had this discussion before, but at the end of the day, that money's coming. Unless we have a cash flow preventing in the United States and the state of Texas, we're gonna get that money. So it's money that we have and maybe it pays bills to the end of the year. But we're going to get that money at the end of the taxes. Sometime that money's coming.
It's coming, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I understand exactly what the word.
You gotta use the wrong, fund balance versus surplus.
Right, and how it has to be. And I don't know that there are laws that are, that limit the way that has to be. But I just, I don't know, I think this is a perfect opportunity to make sure that we all understand this.
Yeah, it sounds like a great thing that we can get some clarity and make some, some.
I don't understand that a hundred percent amount, do you be able to know exactly?
I think that's very fair, so we definitely wanna make sure that we're clear about that.
So, please, this is a discussion. So, if we were to tap into that twenty-four million dollars to fix a plumbing issue or what have you, does it, is, is that money that puts us in a deficit? Or is that twenty-four million dollars something we can use to fix something we need, knowing that it's gonna come to us eventually? I, I don't understand.
Yeah, right. And then, and then to further expand on that, is the money that comes in, is that, are there limitations on that? Like, like repairs and buildings? Is that money just for salaries or insurance or something like that? So that's, that's where I think, that's where I think we would all benefit.
I think that's, yes. Let's, let's get that together a little bit. And maybe even at the next board meeting, give us a little snapshot unless you wanna step in and say something about the fund balance and about how we use that. Or do we wanna repair something?
So, I mean, what she's saying is correct, is that we get all of our revenue in December, January, February, the end of the year. So we have to live on that through the rest of the year. Board policy says I have to have twenty percent. DEA in the past has said.
It says right there, twenty percent in.
Twenty percent operating expenditures.
In fund balance.
But in fund balance.
Okay, so that part is in policy, twenty percent operating expenditures in fund balance at all times?
At all times.
Okay.
And then, in the past, DEA has said twenty-five percent. Of course, they don't have a mandated amount any longer. But, but they say anything that's twenty-five to thirty percent is a healthy fund balance. We run about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. Yes, we could use those funds to fix a roof and we could use them to fix plumbing issues. But when you use them, they're gone. They don't come back to you. So when you start dwindling, when you start dwindling your fund balance down and you keep doing that, you keep doing that, once you get to a point where you don't have thirty days cash on hand, that's when they call you a CTD district, that's circling your nerve. I mean, you're, you're about to go under. And that's not where you wanna be. You don't wanna be in a place where you're below that twenty, twenty-five percent. Because if you do that, then you have to go borrow money, you must pay over the last three months of the year.
Yeah, but the only, the only, the way I look at this, we took one point two million dollars to fix AstroTurf off the fund balance two years ago. I think we bought some other things. In my opinion, air conditioner being fixed or plumbing, a little bit more than AstroTurf. Now, listen, I get it, yeah, AstroTurf was dangerous. I used to play on it. So it is confusing to gather first that twenty-four million.
And this past year, we did put two million dollars in fund balance. But if you don't look at our, the numbers that you put up there all those are adopted. Right now, our amended budget is ninety-six million dollars because we amended into fund balance to pay for a million dollars worth of buses. And we've amended it to, for about one point two five for HVAC units. We're gonna do fifty.
So some of us amended budget in our fund.
So there is one, because we knew we put that two million dollars in last year, we're gonna spend it this year. Now, will we, will we recognize that whole loss? Probably not, because we're gonna, we're gonna manage the budget and make cuts where we can.
So, but I think it's a great thing for us to follow up, is make sure that we all understand. We want clarity, transparency, we wanna make sure that you guys know how we're spending the money. And so we've been talking about that daily and about how we can make sure that we're providing better information, not better information, just information a little more clearly and regularly and maybe some, some opportunities to come and have some conversations regularly. And he started the coffee with CFO. Remind us when the next one is.
March twenty.
March twenty fifth at nine AM in this room. So that's a great time for you if you can make it. And we'll be talking just about finances and what's going, probably what's going on legislation too.
What's that date again? March twenty fifth.
March twenty fifth, nine AM. Did you have something else?
Yes, love this line. So if we, if we're able to just spend some of the fund balance, knowing it's coming when, when the revenue is, comes in from property taxes, what happens? Are there, are there contingencies? Is there a safeguard in place, like if, if a wildfire was freaked out? Or if we have a tornado come and just detonate a huge portion of our property tax base? We're not going to be collecting that same level of tax revenue that we anticipated because of this natural disaster? Does the state have some sort of safeguard in place that would, would help mitigate that?
Well, there, the state would, if they declared a state emergency, there would be some, some funding out there. It would, you know, all, all school districts are insured. So those, those funds would, we would take care of our own buildings through insurance. Which our deductible, I'm assuming, is one percent? One percent, so depending on what building we're replacing, I'd have to come up with that money. Now, will that affect our revenue generation? Probably.
Safeguard is the policy.
Yeah.
Our safeguard is the twenty percent of policy. That's our safeguard.
We can't go below, we can't go back.
Okay, great, okay. Great question, we really appreciate it. I think we know that this is something that we need to just have more information out there.
I think there's a lot of ideas in our community and a lot, a lot of people that are very smart. We all understood exactly how it works. And how the legislation makes us fit into certain rules that can be implemented. Really, thanks for that.
I agree with that.
So, what the community is wanting to know, are you mandated to report suspected abuse and neglect between a teacher and a student to law enforcement? And it looks like it's outlined in Texas Penal Code, section twenty-one eleven. And if you are mandated, how much time do you have? And if we're not reporting suspected sexual misconduct with students, can you help us understand why? Because we had it recently here in the district and the police, there's no police report. So people have been checking to find out. And we would like to understand because if a teacher is sending nude pictures of herself to a student, even if it's alleged, a suspect, and from what I understand, that is by law required to be reported within, I think it's forty-eight hours. So can you address that for us?
So that's a lot of question right there. But I don't know that specific example that you're giving, but yes, we have laws that we follow about reporting. And so if there is any kind of indication of that, we report it. It happens frequently. And so, we do report it to CPS and/or the police depending on, or both. So I don't know exactly.
What's your timeframe for reporting it?
What's, what's, we should do within the day. What is that?
Forty-eight. Okay, forty-eight's what I'm at, then I'm just verifying because this is new for me.
Yeah, we're mandatory reporters for any type of abuse or whatever. Yes, all of us.
Even the, even the.
Yes, we don't make the decision about whether the abuse is going on.
Sure.
We report it. And generally, that happens right when a person figures it out or suspects it doesn't figure it out. That's what's worth it, suspected.
Thank you.
I guess just to address the elephant room, since it sounds like we came right up to it, is there anything in statement on the resignation of the previous band director?
Is that, is that what you're referring to?
I'm just referring to the policy, like how long do you have? And, and yes, I know that in certain circumstances, I am gracious about it, the law is gracious about it.
Yeah, we can't talk about personal things.
Thank you, sorry.
That's fine.
And I wanted to touch on one thing that she mentioned about the open records request. Because a lot of times, when a school district, it involves minors, you're not gonna find that information in the public because of the, it's for two reasons. Because if a minor is involved and/or it's an open pending investigation. So sometimes those open records requests aren't as readily available as they would otherwise be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the board, whenever y'all wanna talk back to this information, I do appreciate it.
But just so we're clear though, does that mean that there is an ongoing investigation into, I think, her people's jostle?
We do not do any of those kinds of investigations. Like, if, if once it's turned over to the police, that's a police investigation.
But it hasn't been turned over.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, we report everything that is inspected.
I don't think anybody in this room has a good answer to this. How do we get people from social media and welfare talking about all kinds of stuff? Some of those true and some of those not true. All it does is damage our community. And it's adults. I don't believe social media, of course, got here because of what's going on. But how do we, how does the school district address this stuff? And how does the community come to their senses, equip with this social media warfare, accusing things and saying things? That ninety percent, I would say, or eighty percent is not even true.
It's hard. In fact, the situation you mentioned, a parent of a student responded on social media today. And so, you know, it is a lot of people talking about things they don't understand or know and that's unfortunate. And we always say there's two sides to every story. I'll tell you, I think it's my job to build trust with you to know that when you see these things going on, number one, you can tell us it's happening if I don't know. And I have wonderful board members that send me things that say, "Hey, do you know this?" And so, you know, we wanna know if things are out there. We want to be able to respond. We can't respond on most of them because a lot of times they're either involving students or they're involving personnel. We absolutely can't go on social media and talk about that. So it's really my job to make sure that you understand that there's a process going on behind the scenes. And so when you see big blowups, usually they're skewed to an emotional person that's behind that. So it might be a parent that's directly involved. What's hard to explain to people is that to get a fair, you know, a fair response from people in the community or if it comes to a grievance, and we've all seen it on social media, it's hard to get a fair response. And so, really, we'd like to work, we wanna be able to. And so really, we'd like to work, we want to build trust, we want you to to feel like there's something going on. And if there's not, you know, um, chances are they're letting me know and I'm asking questions and saying what's going on. Um, but there should be, it doesn't mean that we're always perfect because our business is people. And so people, um, do things really well and then sometimes we make mistakes. And so, um, definitely we know that people in our district make mistakes and we want to, we want to make sure that we are responding to those. And that's really our job at administration is to to look at people making mistakes and and solve those problems for them. But thank you, it is a hard problem to solve and especially when things take off and keep rolling.
But I think you get right on top of it. If, as you build trust within this community, and you've heard me say this, I'm very encouraged from what I've seen. As you build trust in this community, there's gonna be less of this.
Yeah.
Questioning and storytelling, storytelling. As you build trust, that's gonna spread not only through the school district but throughout the community.
Yeah.
And I think some of this, some of this will.
And it'll take time because you guys don't know me, um, and everybody's a known me staff, um, but it'll take time. But I think it does take a group response.
Excuse me, I think it's important.
Does it turn on?
I think it's important for the people in this room to to be, um, be really aware and maybe the ones who actually begin to to just say, look, we're not gonna solve this problem on social media. And, um, if you look at it today, I I mean, I saw two, three posts and I just had to go off of it. Because the more posts that were made, the more emotional it became and the more irrational it became. And it was just not productive at all. It helped no one. And if we want to solve problems, we cannot solve it on social media. If we really want to solve an issue, we'll go directly to the people who can solve those problems. Let's do that together.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Two?
Yeah, yes.
I have about, I think about fifty percent of the people in this room did not know about this incident. And now we all know and we're gonna go home and tell our neighbors and tell our spouses. And I wish it was never brought up in a meeting like this.
I appreciate that. I'll go with that.
Yes. Well, and I'm I'm sorry to say that there's a large part of the community that wants to talk and they want to know, did this get reported to the police? And that is, there is a side that says if we're supposed to report something suspected in forty eight hours, we had a librarian leave here after eighteen years of sexually abusing the children here. Uh, sexually explicit books in the libraries on display. And we let her go to the school and work with no weapon made, nothing on her ledger. So that is deeply disturbed from what's happened and that's past though, and now we're going into the future.
Well, and I I think I should be clear that that's not an accurate statement. So let's be clear.
Well, that's definitely not the community at all.
Is there anybody else that has a question? I'd love, there's some people that signed up. Okay, so we got one more. I don't want to limit you. I can say it all night, so, uh, but I do know some people that signed up to actually ask a question. Yes.
I know in the past couple of years, the cell phone policy in that, like middle school for example, um, all of the teachers were on the same page having the kids put their cell phones away beginning and it was, it was really, really good. Um, I I think there was a lot of progress for the kids actually socializing. They weren't allowed to to get on their phones at lunch. I thought it was, it was great. Uh, I asked my eighth grader now, hey, how was that cell phone policy? Well, it's 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 lagging a little bit, but I just wanted to encourage you guys that that was a really good implementation. The kids were untaught or by not having access to the cell phone and it would be perfect to roll into high school. Um, and then they can just access their phones as needed for whatever educational tools that they can. And that may spill over into helping with the social media league or the social media.
I appreciate that feedback then, because I do think spoke to you, like your instruction, give us a little reminder. Make sure that you're we're reinforcing that because only as good as every teacher feels confident in forcing their classroom. And so if not everybody's doing it and kids come in and say, well, this time I need to keep up the momentum, you know, and so that's where it becomes a little bit of a struggle, so.
It's a great.
It's a great total of percent numbers and everybody's.
Recent numbers.
I just want to tag one of them down.
Okay.
A parent of a fifth grader.
Yes, I can't believe the stuff I'm seeing. Even as a fourth, fifth grader, the cell phones in elementary schools, yeah, you know, are are more prevalent these days. And the things, I know like a bunch of the moms and the conversations we're having of what's happening on social media with fourth and fifth graders. I mean, we got to a point over the course of the winter break and we had to block hundreds of numbers because of what was being sent through his phone in particular. And he's like, I don't know, I have no idea, you know, I don't know what's going on. So it's a great reminder and that's what these times are good for, to hear from parents. And you'll notice that was one of the things should be focused on, cell phones, um, because I do know that, um, that conversation's not going away. And I'll put this plug in if you haven't read The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Cape as a parent, especially of the anxious talking path. It's really interesting the way that, um, they kind of focus on this overprotection in real life and this underprotection online. And so, um, it's a really interesting read and if I have kids, I might be at least differently. I mean, I do have kids, but they're, I'm already believing they're not, they're doing great, but, um, I'm not completely differently with the phone. So, and we are thinking about that too, and I think it's great to hear the feedback from people sitting in the seat, the parents, uh, students in our schools today. Thank you for sharing.
You might, you might consider a canned response. I hate that word. We've all seen it. A canned response, things just start to float around from your desk saying, we we heard or we've seen. There's a process underway.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Let people know we're hearing.
Well, I did get feedback on hearing my superintendent report, um, you know, that the board needs kind of giving you an update about things that we're hearing and, you know, putting in place. I think that's really important for me to hear too. Ready, go? All right, let's go.
Okay, so we'll go into public comments. We have, we have two people can't speak that, or can y'all hear me? We have two people sign up to speak. We'll start with Monica Brown. She signed up to speak on curriculum scores and resources.
Okay.
And this will be the same format as before. You make sure it's.
How long?
It's three minutes and then if I have, well, I clarify questions or I can answer any of your questions and then a little bit of conversation.
Okay, super. So, um, I would love to talk to.
We have a timer. Sorry, we have a timer.
Is this on? Can y'all tell?
I can't hear.
I can't hear. I mean, I don't, you know, but I can't hear it from there.
Mike, can you keep the timer on?
Give us a few seconds.
Okay, thank you.
And you have to hold it pretty closely enough for it.
Okay, how's that? Everybody? Okay. So, um, my timer, you ready, Mike?
I'm ready.
Okay, um, you can make it work and see, but anyway.
I owe you four seconds, so.
Okay, that's fine. I I just, um, wanted to cut to something. I went to a micro school conference recently and this is for all students. It's not just for homeschoolers, micro schoolers schooling. I know reading is a big deal and I just wanted to make the point that classical education is hands down superior. So if you were to venture into going to my more app and finding out about the new free classical education, all you have to do is ask if you said you would send samples. Doesn't mean you have to do it yet, but it is something to look at. I have brought and I have in my car, I managed to bring them all in. This is called My Father's World. It's classical, it's a classical education catalog. Now, I know if you're in public school, you may never use this, but if you have grandchildren or children that are struggling in reading or math, they have something called Singapore Math. If you study math, the people who score the highest in the world are from Singapore and people who use Singapore Math. And in this catalog, there are, first of all, on their website, you can test your child at home. Find out which book they need, buy it and work with them. So you can do weekends and evening. If you're scared that your child, I know someone who does Khan Academy on the regular to be certain the child is getting, the five children are getting an education at the school and at home. He's afraid they won't get the full deal since math scores and reading scores have been down. So I'm just letting you know, these are resources. This is tried and true, written by a school teacher and her husband who have just done this forever. They've got a lot of parent feedback. Another thing classical education has is readers. They're fabulous readers. They're turned on readers. They're inspired. So they also recommend reading lists. You don't have to buy, you can check it out from your library. And these are called living books. In the homeschool world, it's called living books. And it's like Charlotte's Web. It's a book a child doesn't want to put down. It's a delight. It's an interest. It's not, the term that was used years ago, I don't remember the time, was called twirl. It's a funny word, but it's like useless. There is literature that's useless or or flat, whatever. We need some of that. All of us need fiction. We all need, you know, whatever it is that's fun and interesting. But they're really good books. There's a lot of them. They're classical. So classical education takes almost any child and makes them a fabulous reader. And also the Singapore Math, called Dimensions Math is the one I'm using. It creates, the way it goes about it, it's fabulous. So I implore you to look into it and search it out and take Rainberry across the board to high scores in math and in reading. And so that's what I want to share tonight. I have the free catalogs. I've got hundreds of them in my car for anybody who wants them. And I'm bringing the curriculum in for the homeschool community and parents in general, just to see it, use it so they don't have to feel like, um, they're completely dependent on what a teacher can do in a classroom with twenty children. So that's what I wanted to share tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So any questions?
No, I I think there's a lot of great resources out there for parents to use to supplement and do extra at home or help out the home. I know I do that with my own children, so I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, and so if I could, I just want to say, what this one is called, it's called My Father's World. So you can search that online yourself. And like I said, they do have the reading list. So if you're looking for good literature for your children, your grandchildren, you want to turn them on to good reading, this is a great start to start and hopefully our library here will even begin carrying along those books. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next speaker is David Rogers. He's here to speak on the demographic report and bond.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, honorable members of our trustees. Uh, I want to talk for a minute about some of the, uh, statistics and numbers the Zandt study, uh, did from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four in the fall of twenty four to twenty five. The district enrollment increased by approximately thirty students in that timeframe. The Zandt study forecast was for a plus number of one hundred and fifty one students, a total of one hundred and seventy two fewer students. And all of this was known in December of twenty twenty three, well before the May twenty twenty four bond. The twenty twenty four audit identified an increase of thirty, but the Zandt forecast was for an increase of two hundred and four. So another one hundred and seventy four fewer students. One of my concerns is the working parents and the taxpayers who you guys see were denied the right to a free and fair election in the May twenty twenty four bond. Well, another concern I have is I was told by a candidate on the ballot of twenty twenty four that it cost almost fifty thousand dollars to conduct and run that May, that bond election in May. Now, the H C A D forensic audit was sixty thousand. Numerous trustees on here voted against doing a forensic audit for H C A D. The H C A D budget is over one point six million. They have seventeen, they have twenty one, excuse, they have twenty one full time appraisers, they have a chief deputy appraiser and a chief appraiser. Next door in Erath, they have more than twice the land size of Hood County. They have only seventeen appraisers, no chief deputy appraiser. Their budget's only one million. So I don't understand the mismanagement when it comes to financial budgets. How they'll, they'll waste fifty thousand almost on a bond election in May that the voters in a two-year timeframe, the voters voted against the bond three times. Yet trustees on this board were determined to push that through. But they wouldn't do anything for transparency and accountability of H C A D when no one has more influence on the H C A D than the G I S D board of trustees. They appoint three of the five directors. They might as well appoint the fourth one because it's weighted by the majority of the votes. They hire the chief appraiser. They set the policies and procedures for conducting the appraisals. Massive amounts of miss, miss, financial mismanagement, waste and abuse. I really don't understand the behavior of the conduct of some of the trustees on this board and how they can be so callous. And if they're gonna be so callous about handling things like the finances, what are they doing with the hearts and minds of our children? I I really don't understand the thinking and logic that went into many of these decisions.
So the the new demographic report we got was kind of an eye opener for us and it's good information. And we aren't going out for a bond anytime soon. Um, I can't say as a parent with children in elementary and in middle school, it was, it's still needed. There's still repairs. There's still things that this district needs that only a bond would be able to take care of. Um, the in the growth in enrollment did plateau. All that growth that we had previously had is still here though and it's still something we need to address. Where we decide to eventually put a new building, that may change depending on some of the new information we got out of the recent demographic report. Um, and if you would like to be on the long range planning committee when that time comes, we would love to have you join. I think we need to have input from everyone in the community. The more people we can get involved, the better plan that we can come up with, something that the community is actually going to be able to accept and support. And that's the main goal. The main one's best for kids and making sure that we're making the best decisions for everyone in our district. Um, as far as H C A D, we we don't have any control over their budget. We just, we would vote to disapprove of the budget is what we would do. Um, that's the only vote that we have regarding the budget. Um, we didn't vote against an audit. I know that's something that is happening. H C A D is doing an audit. And we don't, we don't vote on that. They just vote to have that happen and it happens. So we don't have a say over that process specifically. I I don't know if I answered that question or if you had a question.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to have one question about that. So the G I S D board of trustees could have voted to send the budget back to H C A D for them to correct it, but most of the trustees did not do that. Some of the trustee, I believe it was a three to two that night, three of the trustees voted not to send the budget back to H C A D, which in essence was approving the budget because they refused to send back.
Right, so it's an automatic, whenever H C A D makes a decision or votes on something, it's automatic approval. The only way something is disapproved is if the majority of the taxing entities call a special meeting to disapprove that action.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, for clarifying that. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. Back to our meeting. The time is now six oh four. Did everybody have anything? The time is now six oh four PM.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.